Before I call this meeting to order, I want to recognize that Council members Cordero and Escobedo are participating via Zoom this evening. So I'll call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of August 2nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll and make a brief announcement about accessing the meeting?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 86395165013. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on the telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone, and when it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Present.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give a report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to items one and two, discussion was undertaken between the council and the negotiator, and negotiating terms and conditions were provided. Nothing further shall be disclosed.
Thank you.
And actually, Madam Mayor, as well, I'd like to note for the minutes that Councilmember Escobedo and Councilmember Cordero did attend the closed session after the roll call.
Thank you. The first item of this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's great honor to be able to present this presentation in regards to the National Night Out, whereas the National Night Out began 1984 as a community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Santa Maria to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., the Santa Maria Police Department, along with the Recreation and Parks Department, and People for Leisure and Youth, will spend an evening celebrating police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie at Rodeo Centennial Park, 2625 South College Drive. And whereas the National Night Out celebration will include not only the Santa Maria Police Department, but also the Guadalupe Police Department, California Highway Patrol, and other agencies from the community that provides health and fitness, literacy, and leisure services. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, as National Night Out in the City of Santa Maria, and invite all residents and businesses to attend the festivities at Rotary Centennial Park. And here to receive this proclamation is Lieutenant Woody Vega of the San Maria Police Department.
Thank you very much. My name is Woody Vega. I'm a lieutenant with the Police Department, and I'd like to thank the mayor and City Council for taking time out to recognize the Police Department for this event. It is a large event. It's a great event for the community. And like many great things, we don't do it by ourselves. We work with Play and Parks and Rec, Rec and Parks, excuse me, to put on this event. So thank you guys to our partners. And I just want to thank the city and the citizens for their continued support of the men and women of the Police Department. And again, thank you for the proclamation. And hopefully after this, everyone can go to the event. It'll be going on until eight o'clock, so we invite everybody to go experience it and talk with the police officers and other people that are there putting on this event. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Woody Vega. And we will be there.
Are they having food sometimes?
They do.
I hope so. Next, we have the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak. Madam Mayor, we have no requests to speak in Zoom, and we have one request to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. Over the objections raised by NESBIT on November 19th, 2019, City Council approved the current model lease and its enforcement agreement. It then took 130 weeks, two and a half years, to get the mobile home rent stabilization back on the City Council agenda. As you know, on June 7th this year, eight weeks ago, this council approved the following motion. Following council discussion and public comment, on motion direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement, to see if there was room for improvement, and to look at alternatives. Thank you again, Councilmember Soto, Councilmember Escobedo, Councilmember Cordero, for passing this motion. We mobile homeowners of Santa Maria have been and remain anxious to help implement this motion. I have received no further communication from staff since the July 19th email on behalf of Assistant Manager Hackelman. As I stated on June 21st, again on July 19th, and now again tonight, I am positive that willing and open-minded participants can and will find positive solutions. Fair, beneficial, mandatory, and enforceable mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria is achievable. I'm positive. But we need to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Stillog, did you wish to make any comments? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item. In order to expedite the meeting, the consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
No.
If there are none, I'd like to adopt the consent, I'd like to recommend to adopt the consent calendar submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having heard the motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny a conditional use permit for Composite Plastic Systems, Inc. to legally establish an existing cellular tower concealment production facility in an 8,000-square-foot portion of an existing 12,000-square-foot building with three screened outdoor square, uh, storage areas on 4.9 acre, on a 4.9-acre parcel in the railroad district of the downtown specific plan.
Staff report is to be made by Planning Division Manager, Ms. Edie.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. This is an appeal of, hold on, okay. Make sure you can hear me. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of this conditional use permit that occurred on April 6th of this year. So this is the project site location. The project site is located at the northwest corner of East Boone Street and South College Drive. It is adjacent to the Hancock Terrace Apartments, which are directly to the west of the site. And there's existing residential development to the north. This is the zoning of the project site and the surrounding area. The project site is located within the downtown specific plan, railroad loft district zoning, and that's shown all through this area in the teal color. So the properties that are located to the west of the site are also in the downtown specific plan, that zoned area. Properties to the north are zoned residential and are developed with single-family homes. And also to the east, there's also some residential development. To the south, we have some manufacturing uses, and that's zoned commercial manufacturing. And then there's additional residential development to the south of that. And then Hancock College is off to the southeast. So the existing buildings on the site were developed in around 1959. There are multiple tenants on the site, but Composite Plastic System, current systems currently operates the four areas that are shown on this slide. So they do work within this portion of the building, and then they have some outdoor storage areas, which are shown in the other highlighted portions of the site. The business creates wireless concealment facilities for cell service sites, so that includes like the faux trees and water towers that you see that make cell sites look like trees and water towers. The business has occupied the site since around 2018, and they do not have a business license or permit to be at this site. So as a result, the city did issue a compliance order in 2019. And then in February of 2021, the city and Composite Plastic Systems entered into a settlement agreement that requires the applicant to obtain a conditional use permit for the business to be legally permitted on the site. So this is a view of the back area of the building where the fabrication of the facilities occur. There's also some storage of hazardous materials. That includes compressed gases, glues, plasters, and paints. And this area is approximately 150 feet east of the Hancock Terrace Apartments. You can actually see the apartments there in the corner of the photo. This is the indoor fabrication space where a lot of the welding activities occur. And this is an example of one of the power components that they put together within that space. This is one of the outdoor storage areas that's just adjacent to Boone Street. It's around 4,000 square feet in size. This is another outdoor storage area. You can see some of the large telecommunication columns in the photo, and it's around 6,800 square feet in size. This is a view of the, um, the outdoor storage area and the property as it's seen from the Hancock Terrace Apartments to the west. It was taken from, I think, the second floor of that building, looking onto the project site. So the Planning Commission reviewed this conditional use permit application at three separate hearings. The first hearing was in December of 2021. And at that hearing, the Planning Commission had concerns with the project's inconsistency with the character of the residential neighborhood, and also with the railroad, railroad loft zone uses because the downtown specific plan prohibits industrial uses. They also had concerns with aesthetic impacts to the neighboring residential properties from the outdoor storage areas. So the commission continued the item to February 16th of this year and requested staff return with some additional information. And at that hearing, they reiterated the concerns they had from the December hearing, and then they moved to deny the project and continued it to April 6th for staff to return with a resolution for denial. So then on April 6th, they did deny the conditional use permit application. And following that denial, an appeal was filed by Mr. Ayers on April 20th. And that's what we're discussing this evening. So the appeal request that the City Council overturn the Planning Commission's denial and approve the conditional use permit, the appeal asserts that the business is a continuation of an industrial use on the site and should be able to remain. They assert that they've, that they have been a good neighbor to the adjacent uses, and that it generates low traffic and visual impacts, is within an acceptable proximity to residential uses, and that they value community safety in their operations. So staff reviewed the appeal. And so the settlement agreement between the city and this business requires the business to obtain the conditional use permit. And if the City Council overturns the Planning Commission's denial and approves the permit, then the business could continue to operate on the site, and it would be a permitted legal non-conforming use if they obtained the conditional use permit. The business is directly across the street from single-family homes on Boone Street. And as I mentioned, it's within 150 feet of the apartment project to the west. So in denying the permit, the Planning Commission determined that residents living in the area could be exposed to the industrial operations of the business. And so that includes the noise and the dust, the paints and adhesives that they use at the site, and also the large trucks that travel to and from the site to make deliveries there and, and pick up the completed facilities to be moved offsite. The business began operating on the site without receiving any permit entitlements or business license from the city, and that includes building permits. And building permits are the mechanism that ensures that proper life and safety improvements are made to the building. So acceptable ingress and egress and ventilation, and also ADA accessible improvements. And so this hasn't received a building permit for that yet. And it's also important to note that the existing downtown specific plan, as I mentioned, prohibits industrial uses. And so the types of uses that could be improved in this zone would be more compatible with residential uses. So that would include retail, commercial, restaurants, coffee shops, hotels, and other types of residential projects on that site. So staff has prepared a resolution for denial of the permit. The findings for denial are based on the project's inconsistency with the general plan's land use element, that the project will have adverse effects upon abutting property, and that it would be potentially detrimental to the health and safety of people residing or living in that area due to the exposure from the industrial operations of the business, and also the aesthetic impacts of the outdoor storage materials on the site. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. And the applicant is also here.
Any questions?
I do, Madam Mayor. Dana, what was the original use of this property when it first began?
So the, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Waterfield, the original use was manufacturing. So in 1959, the site was zoned commercial manufacturing, and most of the uses there were industrial uses.
What type of business was it?
There have been numerous businesses there. The most recent one was called Arnold's Asphalt.
Okay.
That was the most recent one. But there have been many different types of manufacturing uses over the years there.
And remind me again how long that they were in business without a permit or license?
The city became aware of the business on the property in 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cordero, Mr. Escobedo, any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, more than a question, it's a comment that the, the use of the chemicals that they're using, I think it presents more of a concern to me that, that it could drift over to some of the residential areas. And the fact that we haven't had anything happen makes it very fortunate and good luck for us and good luck for the residents. But I don't, I don't think we should continue to allow this to take place. And I would be in favor of supporting the, uh, the rejection of the appeal.
Okay. Okay, any questions, Ms. Soto?
I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. In 2018, there was a downtown specific plan that changed the zoning of that location.
2008.
In 2008, my apologies. And so what that did is that any, if any of the current businesses that were there, or industrial businesses that were there, were to leave or change, change status, they would have to then, we, they wouldn't be permitted to continue to do that type of new business there, correct?
Yes, Madam, yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Soto, that's correct. So any new businesses that would come in would need to fall under the uses that are permitted in the downtown specific.
And so the issue was that there was a change in the business with the new, a change of business, right?
Yes, there's also a six-month provision that's in the municipal code where if a business is, if it's a non-conforming use, for example, it's a, in this case, the existing zoning is the railroad loft zoning, and you have an industrial use. If a use leaves and isn't replaced within six months, it automatically has to be replaced with a use that falls under the current zone as well.
And because they didn't, they were operating without a permit, it la, it elapsed, basically?
Yes. And so under that settlement agreement that I mentioned, we reviewed that and determined that a conditional use permit is required for the business to continue to operate there. And so they did move ahead and apply for that.
If I remember, wasn't that a used furniture store or some antique shop?
Yes. So the, the front part of the building that fronts Boone Street, for a short time, had a business in there that was called Arnold's Bargain Warehouse.
Okay.
And that occurred in about a 4,000-square-foot portion of that building. Then the back part of it was something else.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the council? Okay, is the applicant available for any comments? Okay. Could you please come up to the podium? Could you give your name and any comments you'd like to make?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam. I am Michael Conley. I am the Business Manager for Composite Plastic Systems. I'm accompanied by Mr. Rink Ayers, who is the company owner. I just want to thank the council for hearing us and taking time in your, in your agenda to listen to what we have to share about our operation and what's happening at our facility. I know that you see a lot of cases and you hear a lot of things, and you don't have a lot of time to review every little detail. So I'll do my best to try to address that. Thank you, Ms. Edie, for, for what you shared and for working with us along the way. And also to Cody, who's, who's here for all his support through this process. And also to Ms. Widdom for her help in the beginning as we were seeking a path to make things right with the city and to get things tidied up with the business operation. So I've been supporting the company just after all this came to light, and doing my best to work with the city and bring some, some clarity to things, and to get us on a road to establish the business legitimately and to occupy the space. So I'm resident of Santa Maria. Mr. Ayers is also resident of Santa Maria. The business is located in Santa Maria. All of the employees that work in the facility live in Santa Maria. So we're proud to call Santa Maria our home and a place that we operate and run our businesses from. Similar to many of you that, that sit here in this room, we're, we're proud that Santa Maria is pro-business compared to other parts of Santa Barbara County or San Luis Obispo County, and that you're pro-growth. And so those are reasons why we, we call this home, because this is a place of opportunity. It's a place where a lot of entrepreneurs are, are born from and raise up their businesses. And that's been a longstanding history in Santa Maria, and that's why we, we put our roots here. As, as was shared, the, the business has been in operation for 24 years, so it's, it's not a new business. And yes, there were mistakes as the business was moving into that location regarding an understanding from previous managers as to what the zoning was. And so while it appears in the timeline that there's a large gap, there has been constant engagement with the city and back and forth of trying to find, find a path. It just takes, takes time, as you know, to work through these processes. We have product that's, that's shipped all over the California and Western U.S. We have product right here in Santa Maria. So one of the more recent projects is at the Splash and Dash Car Wash, which is adjacent to Rancho Bowl on Donovan. There is a water tank that's right in the drive-through area, and it looks like it's part of the car wash, when in fact, that's a cellular tower that, that we built here in town and delivered just a few blocks away. So the, the product that we build is made in America with American product for American communities, and that consummation process makes our cities more beautiful. And so we've spent time with our own city staff doing some education processes and explaining the consumer industry and how to make Santa Maria a more beautiful place as cellular use and antennas grow in our community. So we, we do see ourselves as very much a part of our, our city and the beautification of that, and proud that we have an American-made product for, for our community. So, so with that, our, our dollars that are generated here with our employees and what we do is spent in our community. We buy our vehicles from local dealerships. We have our vehicles serviced locally, and our employees spend their income here in this, in this city. So a, during this process, we've, we've worked really closely with Ms. Edie, Mr. Graybill, and then in the beginning, Frank Albro was also part of the process. We did in-person meetings in the city office. We've done site walks where we've invited anybody that wanted to come through and see the operations. We've had full transparency over every activity and materials that are stored. And I believe it was Mr. Cordero that had a concern over chemical usage at the facility. All, all processes that are related to, I'm not sure where the word chemical came in. The products that we use are all household grade that we purchase at Home Depot, Hayward Lumber, B&amp;B Steel. So the, the paints that we use are household latex. We purchase them locally from Sherwin-Williams and Dunn Edwards, and we apply them with rollers or with paint mitts. So we're not using sprayers. It's not a two-part paint system-like vehicle. So it's a latex-based paint. We're using stockwood-type materials to create texture, same as what's used on homes, and that's also applied by hand. So there isn't a chemical process that we're using to develop product. It's, it's steel, and then we're making the steel coated to appear like other things. So it's, chemicals aren't used in that process. That would be hazardous to the community. COOPA, which is the Santa Barbara County Hazardous Materials and Hazardous Waste Control Group, majority of businesses are required to file with them. Their requirements are, if you're holding more than 55 gallons of liquid material, 500 pounds of solid material, or 200 cubic feet of gases, you have to file. And so we do that. Just two containers of compressed gas would qualify you to file with COOPA. Or if anybody's operating a forklift in their operation and they have several propane tanks, you have to file with COOPA. So the fact that we are filing with COOPA is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. So we provide annual reports to them on inventory holdings that qualify for those quantities. And as such, on their inventory list, since it's a standard for all businesses that file with them, their headers do say hazardous materials as part of the report. So we're providing those reports across, but that's their template and standard reporting, and that's why those headers are on there. Hazardous materials have their own definition group that are, that's defined. Did I address Mr. Cordero's concerns with chemicals?
I guess. I'll, I'll ask him.
Okay, thank you. Part of the COOPA reporting requires a facility map and risk mitigation plans. Part of that risk mitigation is you have to allocate space and a containment plan in the event that you spill or release any of the substances that you contain. So if a five-gallon paint bucket spills, you have to contain that material and clean it up properly, and you have to have a place to store it and dispose of it, or store until disposal. So on our facility maps, that's located in a C container, and we have spill containment systems around the facility for such an event. So that's why you see on our facility maps a hazardous waste area, because once your good materials are spilled and no longer usable, it now has become a usable product to unusable, which then defines it as hazardous waste. So a latex paint... So, a latex paint would qualify for that if it's no longer usable. Or if you have a quart of motor oil that you use for vehicle maintenance and it spills and breaks, that now has become hazardous material. It has to be contained and cleaned and stored until proper disposal. So, if looking at a map, that would seem concerning if you saw hazardous materials or flammable materials, but that's part of transparency in saying what's, what's there. So, in that container of question, we store propane in there in proper cages and racking.
God bless you.
Bless you. And we store four small handheld containers of gasoline that are for our vehicles and diesel. So, but that's all part of fire safety, OSHA compliance, and COUPA compliance to present, present that in our mapping. During this, during this process with the city planning team, we worked very closely with them for many months and worked through a lot of issues and concerns. And we came to an alignment with them that gave us a path forward to the Planning Commission. And the city staff's recommendation was for approval. And that approval was in place in both hearings, both in December and then again in February, was the city staff's recommendation. Once the Planning Commission saw for denial, that's when city staff had to support that position, and, which is why we're, we're here today. So, in the conditional use permit path, the business organization is still required several inspections from building, from fire, and there are still more items that would, I'm sure, come up during, during that process to, to get that conditional use permit. So, this is not a open-ended opportunity for us. There's still checks and balances that we'd go through with the city and ensuring that the city is satisfied and happy with, with the operations. And we've always have, have strived to be a good neighbor to the, the houses nearby and to the apartment complex. And as you saw from Ms. Edie's slide, there was originally a concern about the view from the third-floor windows. And the view that they're looking at are our faux branches. So, it's like looking at a garden from their windows as compared to a parking lot or other industrial materials. It's not, not at all an eyesore. The, the buildings frankly look worse than, than our yard. So, I, I don't see that as an issue, and we haven't had any complaints from the Tobes Group, who is the owner of Hancock Terrace. We haven't had any complaints from the community, whether it's the homes across the street on Boone that were built in the 40s and 50s, or from the Hancock Terrace apartments that are across the way. So, there hasn't been any noise violations, any dust violations, odd smells, or any other complaint that someone could file through to the city. And I'm sure each of you in your roles have heard lots of complaints from different folks over things that are silly or seem lower level. So, surely, if someone in that community had an issue with the operations that were happening there, they would raise concerns to the city and follow those channels. So, we, we do believe that we've been a good industrial neighbor in that community and are looking out for the safety through our OSHA programs and through our COUPA and other filings with regulation agencies.
Before we hear from the public, are there any questions from the council? Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Mr. Cummings? Is that, is that your name?
Conley.
Conley, I apologize. I apologize. No, that was a, that was a very nice and great report you gave, and it, you were very thorough in your reporting to COUPA and making sure the regulations were right on par. What I don't understand is how did you miss getting a business permit and a use permit for a business license for this? You've been in business for what, 24 years?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'll allow Mr. Ayers to answer that since he was there during that process.
Okay, I would like to know that.
So, my name is Rink Ayers, President of the, of the company. So, in our operations, we actually had been running two different corporations, Composite Plastic Systems and Edison Industries. And when we moved from previous location to this, we got our lease under the Edison Industries corporate name. And that is what we have originally applied for the business license for, in, when we, prior to moving into the building. But because of the COUPA regulations and everything else having been in our other company's name, Composite Plastic Systems, we say CPS, so COUPA, EH, which is part of, was it EHS? And these other reporting regulations, since we had already done that through the CPS name, that's why we applied for the, the CUP in that name. But we actually have two companies, and the original, and to this day, the, the company that's on the lease currently, or the previous lease, it's now being updated to Composite Plastic Systems, was Edison Industries. So, in fact, we did originally try to apply for the business license under the other company. So, that might be where the cross-connect is.
What year did you try to apply for the business license?
Right, right when we moved, right when we moved in and signed the lease.
And what year was that?
2018.
2018, okay. Did you, did you own that property in 2008?
We're not the owners of the property.
Okay.
So, we were, we were leasing, we were leasing the property.
Okay.
So, when we signed the lease on the property, you know, it was represented to us as a building that could be done industrial, because it's, according to the owners, had not lost its grandfathering clause. Because right prior to us moving in, it was Arnold's Asphalt, which is quite a significant industrial usage.
Absolutely.
And before that, it was chrom, chromium plating, and there was a lot of significant industrial uses there. Ours is pretty minor in relationship to those. But we were told that because it had not lost, it would not have lost its grandfathering, because it was industrial use before then, that, that we could in fact continue our operations there in the building as-is. And it, it already, it already had the electrical and the
Right.
ADA compliant bathrooms and such.
And I, I get that, and I think that unfortunately, the owners might have misinterpreted the grandfather use as with Ms. Edie was indicating that depending on the types of businesses that go in could change the type of use as to where you would, it would not fit.
Well, the, to clarify my understanding of that, is that any business that operates, can operate under the CM zoning can then move in and maintain the grandfathering clause. That, in other words, the property does not lose that usage, legal non-conforming, until such time as six months go by where it was never used as that. Okay, so, my, our contention was from the very beginning, it was legal non-conforming. The zoning had changed back in
2008.
2008. But since then, and even to this day, it continues to be legal non-conforming industrial usage. So, it never had lost its use. The, part of the discussion we had back from the very beginning was, oh, the zoning might have lost its usage because of the operator in the front, which was the third store that you talked about. But that was a business, they got a business license for the front 4,000 square feet of the building, which is not what we're, that's not even part of what we're discussing right now.
Okay.
So, we're only talking about the 8,000 feet that was not part of that. The front 4,000 feet did become railroad loft or whatever the zoning title is. The back, you know, we contended was, had never lost its CM, regardless of the use. So, whatever usage fits in CM zoning can in fact move into that building. There was confusion about that, though, with our discussions with the city?
Yeah, and maybe Ms. Edie can clarify what the city policy is regarding.
Yeah, I, I think what I would just do is reiterate that, as you can tell, there's a lot of history and background on this particular business at this site. I think what's important is that when we were notified of this use being on the property, we looked into the previous businesses that were there. We looked into the CM zoning and the uses that can go into the CM zone, and that's where it was determined that they could stay if they got a conditional use permit. And so, that's what, what was written into that settlement. And that's what applies to this particular business.
And so, there wasn't any six-month lapse in regards to a conditional, or industrial use being continued on that location?
Well, it's difficult, because Arnold, we do know that Arnold's Asphalt was at that site. But because we don't know exactly when Mr. Ayers' business went in, we don't have a for-sure timeline on that. But it is, we are sure that they can get the conditional use permit, and that would allow them to stay as a use on that property currently. I don't know if Mr. Watson wants to add anything to that.
Mr. Watson?
Again, we negotiated this, and really, the, the, whether or not it lapsed was admitted, in essence, in the settlement agreement.
Okay.
That there was an agreement that a conditional use permit would be required in order to maintain the facility and not under a grandfathering position. That, that was resolved in the agreement. So, really, what's before you today is whether or not a conditional use permit is appropriate for this business on that site in a railroad loft zone. And it's, the Planning Commission contended and, and found that it was, it's not an appropriate place for a conditional use permit. That's the decision before you, not whether or not it's grandfathered in or not. That actually was resolved by, short of litigation, by CPS through their attorney, through Heather Widom of my office, negotiated, wrote out a, a written agreement, and, and then the conditional use permit was applied for. So, they've acknowledged that regardless of what's happened, if a conditional use permit is not obtained, then the business will close.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
I'm curious as to what would happen if your appeal didn't go through today and you didn't get your conditional use permit. Where would you take your business?
Unfortunately, there is no other adequate property in Santa Maria or even the surrounding areas for our kind of business, because our, our product is fairly large, and so, it takes, you know, we have 50-foot pole sections and such that just need to be stored somewhere. Doesn't take a lot of space, as you saw pictures, and I'm sure we could look at them again. Where we store the poles is actually in the middle of this whole five-acre complex. It's not even close to residential or the stuff. So, pretty much the only thing that's next to the residential is these fake branches. Like you said, it, it looks like a garden. But as far as where we'd have to go, we have no idea. We would, we would have to move out of town, hopefully not out of state. There unfortunately just isn't properties for us that are adequate for this kind of usage. So, I mean, we would hope that we wouldn't have to shut down, but there's just
Mr. Cordero, Ms. Escobedo, do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any additional questions, but I think you gentlemen have done a great job.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Soto?
When did it go, when, when was the shift from asphalt to what it is now?
It literally was within a week of, of us signing the lease and moving in.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, they, they were in it. They gave up their lease, and we, our lease, actually, our lease was before they moved out. They needed more time to move out, so we, we waited, I think, another month. But we literally took over the building after, after they moved out.
And you got permitted prior to you signing the lease?
We, we applied, we applied for a business license under Edison Industries, the other company I was telling you about. And my understanding of the process was that we go to, go here. We apply for the business license. We go over to Planning Department. They look at the building and see if it meets the usage. So, we did that. So, we went there. They, you know, they sign off. We go back. We paid our check to the city. But we don't actually get a business license until they see the operation in existence. So, it's kind of a little catch-22 for businesses. They have, they actually be in operation before the, this is my understanding. I'm not sure I have this exactly right. And so, we did that process. We, we applied for the business license. We got, but then there was confusion. They said, then there was confusion, as I recollect, at the time, with a different general manager who was handling this process. But there was confusion of, oh, wait, this is railroad loft district. You can't be in there. And that's what started this whole process of, no, we, we can. It's CM zoning. It was being used as that. And as said by, you know, the city attorneys, that, that kind of was understood, but we chose, we had two routes. We could either go to, through a legal route, you know, take, take this to court, or whatever, or we could in fact agree to the stipulation. So, we, I guess, apparently, we gave up the right to talk about the grandfathering clause in lieu of the CUP. We were just told by everybody this would be a simpler process.
Okay. Madam clerk, do we have, I need to open this up to a public hearing. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do we have any, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, neither of those.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for first, for consideration and/or a motion.
Do you have any comments?
You know, I, I just, I guess, part of my comments are, I, I don't know how, if you're running a business, and I have run a business, how you don't know that you have to have that business license for the business. I don't understand how you don't do your due diligence in finding out the kind of zoning you have to have for a business. I, and, and storing things outside, this has been an ongoing practice in Santa Maria for a long, long time. I can't even remember how long.
Outside storage?
Outside storage, yeah. Anyway. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I mean, to me, it just sounds like there was a lot of misunderstandings and simple human mistake, like mistakes. And I'm really concerned about what this would mean to the employees that you all have under you. And I actually pulled up the meeting, the minutes from the Planning Commission and saw the recommendation of staff at that time, and so, I would be inclined to supporting the CUP. CPU.
CUP.
CUP.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Well, wait, wait, did council member?
Do we have any comments from council members online?
Councilmember Cordero, councilmember Escobedo? No comments, okay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a difficult one. There are laws and regulations, you know, that a city has to abide by. And we get complaints all the time about non-conforming, even in residential zones, where someone goes in and opens up a business in a residential zone, and it's just not complateable. And it's just really sad, because I know you guys have done a great job. And I'm sure we've, you've put product, well, you were just talking about the car wash, the products here and other products elsewhere. So, I don't know.
We, you know, we have the zoning, and we've gone through this. We're doing a general plan amendment right now and going through our general plan, and it's really important. And, and I understand, you know, for whatever reasons, and you can call them mistakes, but it's so important for business people to do their due diligence when they are going into business. If we, if we, you know, in the Planning Commission, it was a four, was a four-one or four-zero. And, and there was one person, I guess, absent. And then, how many other in the, in the downtown specific plan or in other, others' districts, do we just say, let other zoning go by, because maybe they made a mistake or they forgot to do something, you know, because then you might as well just wipe out all of our zoning. You might as well wipe out all of our, our general plan and our general plan amendments. So, and that is my position.
So, do we want a motion?
Well, yeah, you have one.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a motion to approve the CPU?
CUP.
CUP? I think that maybe does look like, the CUP?
Do I have a second? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
That dies for lack of a second. Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt a resolution to deny the appeal.
I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt a resolution to deny the appeal and affirm the decision made by the Planning Commission to deny a conditional use permit for Composite Plastic Systems to permit an existing cellular tower concealment production facility at 701 Arctic Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Cordero, seconds. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Escobedo?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Oh, sorry, I think I just need to put in my microphone.
We're voting to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission. Your vote is no?
Yes.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Wait, did he, did, sorry. He said that he was having audio issues. Did he have audio issues at the moment that I made the first motion?
Can you hear Councilmember Soto?
Did, Mr. Escobedo, did you have any audio issues when I made the first motion?
You know, I've been coming in and out, so I did not hear the...
The first motion? So does that undo this whole...
Again, the technology, he clearly heard the second motion and was able to affirmably vote on it, and he did vote to, he voted in the negative, so his vote is accurate.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, it passes to deny and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission.
Yes. Okay, the next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the upcoming meeting of the city council is August 16th. We have a number of items. One of note is a retirement resolution for Al and Sutterfield, who has videos these meetings and works in our TV production studio. He'll be retiring, and we want to recognize him. We'll also bring forward an opportunity for the council to award a bid for the street construction projects, approving the budget. So we will be getting the portion of the road maintenance work that we're looking forward to doing in town, bringing forward a development agreement for a portion of the downtown redevelopment with the Vernon Group, and the fourth quarter budget report. Also, I'd like to note, September 6th is the meeting after Labor Day, and at this point, we don't have any items on that agenda, so I could work with the mayor to see if we can cancel that meeting or not. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's have reports from city council, oral reports. Mr. Cordero, can we start with you?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have no further questions on COVID control.
Mr. Escobedo?
Hello? Nothing to report.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
I just have one comment, and it's going, and I hope I don't embarrass him, but it has to do with Mr. Chung-In. We were at an event on Saturday. He has the two cutest little boys ever. They are so well-behaved, they have a great vocabulary, and they're so respectful, and I can't tell you how refreshing that is. So I just want to publicly say that. They were just awesome. You and your wife do a wonderful job in raising your children. That's all.
Wow.
They were darling, oh my gosh.
Be sure and give them a star when you get home, Ms. Ring. July 20th, I attended the quarterly schools meeting. On the 21st, I attended SB-CAG monthly board meeting. On the July 25th, I attended the dignity moves meeting. On the 27th, I went to the grand reopening of Merrill Gardens of their memory care. And on the 28th, I attended the city's counties joint affordable housing task force. And on July 29th, they did the inclusionary house, no, I didn't do that, I didn't get there. Okay, and that is it. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.